There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Resolution seventy-three, commendation of Dirk Stoltz. Motion in a second, please. Supervisor Gallant, Supervisor Hartwig.
Whereas Dirk Stoltz has contributed twenty-seven years of loyal service to the citizens of Washington County, and whereas Dirk Stoltz has chosen to retire from his present position of deputy sheriff with the sheriff's office, now therefore be it resolved that the Washington County Board of Supervisors pause in its deliberations to pay tribute and to commend Dirk Stoltz for his twenty-seven years of meritorious service. Be it further resolved that on behalf of all citizens of Washington County, this body does herewith extend to him heartfelt thanks for his many accomplishments and successes. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Dirk Stoltz as a token of appreciation on the part of this board.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Today, you're the most famous person in your family. Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next up is Resolution seventy-four, commendation of Mary Zorn. Motion in a second, please. Supervisor Shadron, Supervisor Vespoli.
Whereas Mary Zorn has contributed thirty-two years of loyal service to the citizens of Washington County, and whereas Mary Zorn has chosen to retire from her present position of office supervisor with the district attorney's office, now therefore be it resolved that the Washington County Board of Supervisors pause in its deliberations to pay tribute and to commend Mary Zorn for her thirty-two years of meritorious service. Be it further resolved that on behalf of all citizens of Washington County, this body does herewith extend to her heartfelt thanks for her many accomplishments and successes. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Mary Zorn as a token of appreciation on the part of this board.
Next up is Resolution seventy-five, county aid at bridge and covert replacement for the town of Farmington. Motion in a second, please. Supervisor Hartwig, Supervisor Kelling. Any questions or discussion? There being none, we vote electronically, correct? We'll vote electronically in a minute. Mr. Newman abstained. Milliken. There we go. It passes eighteen to one with one abstention, which is Supervisor Newman, because that's his town. Next up is Resolution seventy-six, grant application for energy efficiency and conservation block grant. Motion in a second, please. Supervisor Mary, Supervisor Schultes. Any discussion? We'll vote electronically, this does require a two-thirds majority. It passes unanimously. Our next item is Resolution seventy-seven, grant application for targeted runoff management program for large-scale agricultural projects. Motion in a second, please. Supervisor Mary, Supervisor Gallant. Any discussion? There being none, this is also a two-thirds majority requirement. It passes unanimously. Next up is Resolution seventy-eight, urban non-point source and stormwater program. Motion in a second, please. Supervisor Vespoli, Supervisor Bailey. Any discussion? This is also a two-thirds majority required. Mr. Newman. It passes unanimously. Resolution seventy-nine is to amend the capital improvement plan for renovation and expansion in the sheriff's office for consolidated dispatch and the co-responders program staff. Motion in a second, please. Supervisor Bossert, Supervisor Gurrath. Any discussion? There being none, we'll vote electronically, this is, excuse me. Yeah, we're still voting. Let us change screens. No, I'm still on the voting screen. Okay. Supervisor Gallant.
Thank you, Chair. So, I want to make sure I understand, so this is in addition to the two-hundred or three-hundred thousand dollars we already approved for the German Town consolidation efforts, which was for equipment and et cetera?
This was presented in Public Safety this last month, and it passed unanimously. It's changing things around to better use the space, so...
So it's only more for space and not the equipment?
Right.
Okay. And just an observation, I think we have an opportunity to kind of sharpen our pencils on some of our original budgeting for CIP. We seem to be coming in under budget, which either A, means we've been sandbagging, or two, we've done a good job of project management. I suspect it's some of both, since there's been three or four of them, and not the tens of thousands, but in the fifties or hundreds of thousands, so, just an observation.
Yeah, you might recall that we began to put a ten percent edge on everything for inflation, and that's settling down apparently a little bit, but your comments are well taken. Now we're ready to vote? We'll vote electronically. It passes unanimously. Next up is Resolution eighty, general fund transfer to fund the rural communities' land and water conservation program. This is also a two-thirds majority. Supervisor Mary, Supervisor Conrath. Any discussion on this? Okay, this is also a two-thirds majority. Supervisor Conrath, let me turn on your, oh, I gotta do this. Proceed.
Thank you. I was expecting a little discussion from people, but, yeah, I appreciate CLCF for, you know, all their years, their fifty years of essentially trying to preserve our, you know, our quality of life and way of life without support from the county, you know, as a private organization. And, like my letter says, too, you know, we need a balance between the next-gen housing and the land and farmland water preservation. And I believe, you know, CLCF, too, partnering with them, you know, to help look holistically, too, at trying to preserve our quality of life and our green spaces and everything. But, and I would like to share, too, a constituent of mine reached out, and then I think he might have reached out to some of you also, to ensure that I vote, you know, in support of this, but he didn't, you know, realize initially, too, that I had helped draft this resolution, and I told him, too, that the county exec was making me essentially put my money where my mouth was with always speaking of, we need to, you know, create this balance. So, but I appreciate your support, really, for our, you know, next generation of, you know, of our citizens here in Washington County. Thank you.
Supervisor Conrath, the county executive can't make you do anything, you're a supervisor. Supervisor Gallant.
Thank you, Chair. You know, this was at the land use and planning, and I had some questions there, and I still have questions, primarily, what is the primary intent? What's the primary objective? And I've not seen that yet, nor have I seen any success criteria that the grant pilot program would use to determine whether success has been met or not. And I understand those are in the making, which procedurally just irritates me, because we should have that upfront versus after the fact, in my opinion. But more importantly, Supervisor Conrath did state, not specifically, but basically, this is going to Cedar Lakes Conservation Foundation. That's where the five-hundred thousand dollars is appreciably going. So let's understand that. What is their mission? And their mission, as we heard, is a private entity that is preserving farmland, and that's either through land easements or purchasing development rights. And I, for one, will not be voting for this, because I do not believe county taxpayers' dollars should be used to preserve farmland. If people want to donate money to the trust, they can do that. Every one of us can. Every single constituent in this county can do that and are doing that. But to use taxpayers' dollars, I will not be voting for that. If you read the package, and those of you who were here in two thousand and seven, I was, and I voted against, there was a referendum, and it failed, two to one, to use county taxpayers' dollars for just this express purpose of either purchasing development rights or easement of farmland. So I will not be voting for it, and I encourage all of you that if, while it says it's a pilot, it's a one-time pilot, it is setting a precedent, and it's a very slippery slope. So I encourage all of you to think about your vote and for why. And then lastly, again, procedurally, you know, the Farmland Preservation Plan Advisory Committee, you know, met just yesterday. I would have hoped that the conclusion of that and any recommendations and considerations would come before the board before we would consider something such as this. So again, I think things are out of order in terms of timing, but more importantly, it's using taxpayers' dollars for purchasing farmland. That said, I do support land and water conservation efforts, always have. Matter of fact, we just voted for two of them, that will do just that, to help preserve the quality of water in Washington County, whether it be lakes, stream, water beds, et cetera. If it is our desire to support the ag community, which I believe it is, in part, I think there's another way to approach that. And I think making the ag community as sound and sustainable, economically sustainable as possible, is an approach to take. While I don't have, you know, any details or thoughts, but, you know, why couldn't we capitalize more on our economic development tools that we already have to help support or prop up the ag community in Washington County? For example, we've heard about labor shortages, just recently in our listening sessions, one of the things that dairy farmers said is, look, we don't have workers, we need to go to robotic automation. Well, guess what? Can those farms afford a million-plus dollars for robotics? And will traditional financing give them a loan, based upon the risks that their business presents? I would argue our own economic development funding could assist in that in some way. So let's prop up the agricultural community, which, end result, can be preserving farmland, because they're sustainable, versus just buying farmland. So thank you for thoughts and considerations, but again, I will not be voting in favor.
Supervisor McCulley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to start out by saying, I want to thank Brian and I serve on planning and land use together, and I know him to be a good, a limited government, you know, if it's libertarian, I feel I am the same way. This is one of those issues, though, that you need, in my opinion, you need to contextualize, and that there are a lot of constituents, when I ask people why they like to live in Hartford or in Washington County, you know, the thing they talk about the most is the rural nature of it. And I understand that there's an irony to that, right? There's a nimbyism that's hard to understand, but not every position that everybody takes is reasonable. So they just want what they want. And when I ran for office, I said I would always view things through the lens of, how is what I'm doing make the life of the people that I serve better? And I think that this is something that people want to see, I think they almost see it as a core function of county government. I don't know that they really know what to expect from county government, but they want to see the, you know, the county that they have, they expect changes, but they don't want to see, you know, farmers have to sell property, and maybe it's a financial, you know, reason, to be developed for housing, they would like them to have an option that perhaps they can accept less money and preserve that property, you know, for farming, and I think it gives that. The other thing is, you know, today, as the dollar begins to devalue, people are seeing most places that they can invest their money, they're concerned about, and so real estate is really today becoming a huge investment tool, and I know that Supervisor Schultes has brought up something that people have come to me, where they're concerned about ownership of land in Washington County from entities that aren't within our country, and they are concerned about that. And I can say that in my little part of the world, I live just basically just to the east of the Dodge County line, and when I ride my bike, and yesterday I had to take a drive out to Dodge County to help someone do a prairie burn, I counted fourteen no-solar-farms signs on my drive. And this is a concern that people really have. They're concerned about these things, and they see vehicles like this as a way to push back at that and to do it. I share all of Supervisor Gallant's concerns. I think, I thought of many of the same thing. But on the whole, when I look at it, and this is a one-time grant, it also, for Cedar Lakes Conservation Foundation, they need, they're applying for a four-million-dollar matching grant from the federal government, so they're trying to get together dollars, and it's hard to get four-million dollars together with individual donations, that this is sort of a boost to help them to accomplish their mission. And so, under the guise that it is a one-time pilot, and it's something we can watch, and then maybe apply metrics to as we watch this, I'm going to vote for it. And so, I just wanted to put those things out there. I think this is a very forward-facing issue to our constituents. Like I said, I know it is to mine, it's almost amazing that people that I talked to were just immediately for this, and so I'm going to be voting for it, but I respect, you know, the other side of that, you know, issue. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Conrath, if you wouldn't mind, you've already talked, so I'll let Supervisor Kelling talk, and you can have the last word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Supervisor Conrath, I appreciate it. I think Mr. Gallant is on point with some of his comments. I would agree with a lot of them, like Mr. McCulley. I did take the time to read through the packet, and back in two thousand and seven, there's some names on there that I recognize and admire very much. And it seems the main issue that the people who were against it took was that it was setting up a permanent board that was being possibly continuously funded by the county. But this does not do that. This is a one-time grant that helps the board, much like we did with the golf course, where they raised money, and we added to it, and they were able to put the rights to the land that it would always be a park or a golf course, and that's really what's happening here. Farms in Washington County, and the reason why we want to preserve them, is over four-thousand of our residents are employed by these farms. So they're our largest segment of employees are in farming and agriculture here in Washington County. We would protect our businesses. If we thought, saw the opportunity to protect one of our factories that was a large employer, we would certainly want to do that. So I think that's important. They also have a one-billion-dollar-plus impact on Washington County. And this is another thing that's extremely important. Our economic impact, in this case, says a lot about this money and what we want to invest in. We want to keep that economic impact very high. And I will say this, as a driver, a guy who gets around the state, I've seen these solar farms, and they're god-awful ugly. I mean, thousands of acres, as far as the eye can see, ugly solar panels that used to be beautiful farm crop-growing land is now growing electricity, and I think it's one of the ugliest things I've ever seen. I don't mind the windmills, because you can still grow crops around windmills, but you can't, you grow nothing but weeds underneath these solar panels. So our heritage in Washington County is our agricultural roots, and I think it's very important that we recognize that, that we support that for not just quality of life issues, but economic issues, employment issues. You know, these are the things that this would really support. There is community support behind this, they will be donating money, they will raise money. This is just but a seed that we're planting. So I would strongly ask that you support this initiative. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Conrath.
Thank you, Chair. And I appreciate Supervisor Gallant sharing his view and his points, you know, very well taken, your concerns, and, but the first thing, too, I want to point out that this is beyond farmland preservation. The title is land and water conservation, yeah, working parallel with, you know, the farmland preservation committee and team, but, you know, this is beyond that, so take note of that also, please. And, you know, I would like to share, you know, your, I appreciate also your labor shortage concerns, you know, for the farmers, and, you know, bring that back to their committee, and if, you know, and, you know, any feedback that people have, you know, on other committees and things, too, we should always be able to share that with each other, regardless of, you know, where, what committee and things we serve on. So I appreciate that, and maybe, too, that's something we need to, you know, add to those goals and agendas with that group. But, too, I just want to share, again, you know, that CLCF, you know, they've been proactive as possible on their own, like was pointed out, you know, investing millions of dollars themselves over fifty years, you know, without our help and the betterment of the community as a whole. And their trails and everything, they're open to the public, and they are essentially expanding our park system. And, too, if you look at it that way, for your charge for the county, and truly adding to our quality of life here. And, you know, why CLCF, they're, you know, they've been established fifty years, they're celebrating their fiftieth anniversary, and they have the expertise and the resources to, you know, help partner with us to figure, you know, to figure this out. And, you know, you speak of goals, I, yeah, I, too, don't like, you know, putting the cart before the horse, and I, you know, have voted against some things when I've seen that also. But, you know, really, the more global goal is that, you know, land and water conservation, and we have to, you know, figure out as a team what particularly, I mean, it's, you know, five-hundred thousand dollars, you know, in my pocketbook, that would be huge, but as a county as a whole, and when we're speaking land and water, that's kind of a little, it's not that much, so how do we, you know, what do we really focus that on? Will be a challenge, too, and I would appreciate, you know, people's voice on that also. But, thank you.
Supervisor Mary.
Thank you, Chair. I agree totally with Supervisor Gallant's points, to some point, I believe he and I had a conversation regarding this after the Land Use and Planning Committee discussed this. I would strongly encourage you, though, to support this resolution. It's five-hundred thousand dollars of the county money, and I think someone here used the term "seed money," it kind of is. It gets the ball rolling to get other contributions into the program, and if I'm not mistaken, there's a possibility of a four-million-dollar grant from USDA or another government organization, and that does not include potential private contributions that can come into this program. So it's, as has been expressed by two or three people here today, that's, this is part of the quality of life we have in Washington County. You may live in an urban area, but within ten minutes, you can be out in the countryside, listening to the meadow larks, watching the hay getting cut in May and June, and enjoying this rural lifestyle. And we do need to do something, not try to preserve this before it all gets taken over by land development. So I would just strongly encourage your support. Thank you.
Thank you. I also will vote for this, but I'm very intrigued by Mr. Gallant's comments on EDWC getting involved, something we should look into, so. No further comments, we'll vote electronically. This also requires a two-thirds vote. It passes eighteen to one. Next is Resolution eighty-one, a general fund transfer and authorization for creation of one deputy position to be shared between the town of West Bend and the sheriff's office. Motion by Supervisor Shadron, second by Supervisor Bossert. I might add that this passed unanimously in the Public Safety Committee. Any discussion? Supervisor Shadron. Supervisor Shodran.
I thought Dennis was first. Either way. Does it matter? Okay, thank you. I just want to make a point again, the Town of West Bend is in my district, as well as Supervisor Conrad's. And it seems like when we share services like this, I've been finding that a lot of these different districts have been reaching out for different services, not necessarily road or IT. And this is a unique one here to the Town of West Bend. So I'm, A, I'm hoping it passes, and B, I hope it works out, so we can evolve with the shared services in the future. Thank you.
Supervisor Kelling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In concept, I like the idea. I have one question for the sheriff, if you don't mind. I'm just wondering, so being as we're sharing this deputy, I want to know that we have the flexibility in an emergency to utilize this deputy in perhaps a different area, that he can be moved. He should, like, you know, sometimes what happens when the south part will have a big car wreck or something like that, and all the deputies will kind of have to migrate to the south and leaving open areas. So then, would this deputy be then allowed to maybe move over west and cover more area? Do we have flexibility with this, or is it going to be strictly Town of West Bend?
It would be very similar to what we do with the Village of Richfield. So that type of circumstance, we utilize the officers wherever they're needed in an emergency. So my conversations with the town chairman from West Bend were that the Sheriff's Office still retains full operational control of the deputy, but we focus certainly on the Town of West Bend. But yes, in emergencies, they could be utilized outside the township, for sure.
So, no geo-fences on this deputy?
No, not at all.
Okay, that, and I think that's important. I kind of knew the answer to this. I always ask questions that I know the answer to. So, just to make sure that we're alleviating any concerns, that this is not just going to be strictly a Town of West Bend deputy, that he would be utilized like other deputies in our force. He would mostly cover the town, but in case of emergency, we have the flexibility and operational control of this deputy. So I think that's an important point on this. Shared services are something I always support. It's something where we can save our constituents' money. It helps us in the long run. Our deputies do a great job of covering this county. And I think adding another one is really a big boost for us as well. And kudos to the Town of West Bend for this idea and this opportunity, because I really think that helps us with our plan for adding more deputies and, you know, really getting a better handle on how we police our county. So, thank you very much, and great job.
Supervisor Krebs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Currently, does the Town of West Bend have a town constable or any type of police service? They might as well stay up there.
Stay up here. Yes, they currently have an appointed police chief, who happens to be one of our deputy sheriffs. The intention of that, that they would eliminate that position and transition completely over to the Sheriff's Office for localized ordinance enforcement.
Okay. I'm just wondering, there was no attachment from, like, the actual Town of West Bend, and have not spoken with anyone there about it. But I'm wondering, like, what, have they expressed, like, what's missing right now that this creation, this additional service is required or needed? Because I haven't heard of a lot of major crime issues coming from the Town of West Bend at this point, other than just boat launch, parking fines, and stuff like that. So what's the intention of this officer's time during the day?
Sure. So I think, I don't want to speak for the town chairman, but the equalized value of the Town of West Bend is astronomical compared, mainly because of all of the lake properties around. And I think they just have a desire to have more visible presence. So I guess I should clarify one thing for Supervisor Kelling. I do intend on marking the squad as the Town of West, it'll be a deputy sheriff squad. But I really want the town residents to see that it's a sign, that it's a Town of West Bend squad. So it will have that marking, if it's approved, and it gets to that point, you'll see that. But really, I think the town chairman, they have an option when they want to see increased police presence. They can start their own police department, which there's a huge duplication of services to that. They can contract with the Sheriff's Office, they can contract with the police department. And I think Chairman Zagel just thought that it would be much more seamless having the Sheriff's Office do it.
Ultimately, would this officer be taking direction from you, the sheriff, then, or from the town, from the town chairman?
It would be the sheriff, certainly. Although I will say that the localized ordinance, like, if they have a problem with a specific property or some localized town ordinances, I'm sure the town chairman or town board would have contact with that deputy to enforce those local ordinances.
Okay. I understand if they want the additional services. I don't see why we should really get in the way and stop that. But at the same time, too, I don't want this position to be, I'm afraid of the overhanded heaviness of some of the local rules that the township may enact and try to use this position for. So I would hope that it's, there's exercise, it's exercise of discretion that it really is, I don't know how to say this, its patrol duties are kept to hopefully what our intent are, not just local enforcement of the lakes.
I would say, like I said, it mirrors the model that we do in Richfield since 2007. And I think we have a very good balance of that, where the sheriff retains the control of the deputies.
And that, Richfield pays for their position 100%, correct?
Yeah, two positions.
Two positions. So not so much for the sheriff, but for the rest of the board. Is, it's a question, I don't have a statement on it, but is this going to be opening us up to renegotiate other positions or other townships to want that, too? So is this, are we ready to bring on more positions full-time and pay for those as they're requested? I guess that's a question just for everyone to think about.
Supervisor Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Krebs. I asked my question about who the deputy reports to. The other, I guess I got the mic, so I'll mention it. This is a pretty sweet deal for the Town of West Bend, because their portion of this position is funded privately. So no town tax dollars are going towards this position. They were fortunate enough to get a commitment for that. So, I mean, I'm in support of this, but it's a pretty sweet deal for the town. Thanks for asking my question.
Supervisor Mary.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Sheriff. I live in Germantown, and I can tell you, it's always nice to see a Germantown squad car go up and down your streets once in a while. It gives you an extra sense of security, that, hey, you know they're out there. And of course, now in Germantown, we just passed a referendum. We're going to be increasing that police presence. I would just like to hope that in the future, this officer, as he spends his time in the Town of West Bend, will be extremely bored. Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Gallitz.
So, shared services, I've always been an opponent of. And again, based on some of the discovery here, is it truly shared services? Or is it Washington County taking on the bill, right? If you had a private whatever that was paying for half the position, now the sales tax will be paying for half of that? So again, it's all of Washington County paying for, I mean, we've been seeing too much of this, in my opinion, where all of Washington County is paying for some municipalities. And I get the shared services part of that, it's truly shared services. But if they've, up to this date, have been paying for it either in their own levy or private funding, now they're coming to a bigger, deeper pocket. We only have such a big pocket. The shared services and the county sales tax, if we haven't tapped that out already, I don't know how we couldn't have. So again, we continue to go to that well. That well is only so deep.
One thought just popped in my head, and maybe I'm jumping ahead of Supervisor Krebs on this, but this is all road patrol, it has nothing to do with lake patrol, correct?
Correct.
Supervisor Krebs.
When I said lake patrol, I did, I was more referring to the land side of the lake patrol as far as parking, no parking zones and stuff like that, that the town has enacted around the lakes. I don't know much about this, and I don't know if this is appropriate meeting to dig into the details, but if part of this position is going to be privately, private donations are going to be funding the township's portion of this position, not getting into the Town of West Bend politics, but that sounds like someone's private police department at that point. And that doesn't sit well with me to start with. It's kind of like private money in our elections, where that doesn't sit well with most of us either, I would suspect. So for that reason, I personally can't support this at this time until I know more about where that additional funding is coming from. But if this, if we do need to vote on this, or if we're wishing to vote on this today, I would be proposing that we do amendment to the resolution. And that would be on line, line 18 and line 19. So where it would read instead, whereas, under the proposal, 50% of the position and its related costs would be funded by the, and at that point, I don't know what the appropriate, fill in the blank answer is, but it's clearly not the Town of West Bend at that point. It should read by private donations or private citizens at that point. So I don't know if I could get the advice of other supervisors or from county attorney on this matter. But I don't think at this point, it really is the Town of West Bend's tax levy that's going to be funding this public-private position. I don't know enough about this, that at this point, this is, I would like to know more before I would support it.
Thank you. Supervisor Kelling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would remind you that the county sheriff is responsible for patrolling the entire county. So it's not a matter of private police force, it is not a matter of, well, let's just say, you know, moving or the county paying for extra. It is the sheriff's responsibility for the entire county. Now, what the Town of West Bend is asking for is more than what currently the sheriff's department provides for their area. And they're willing to come with their dollars to it. Whether or not it's privately, if it's privately funded, more power to the taxpayers. I'm all for that. I mean, we do private funding on virtually everything we do, you know, if we can. I mean, again, I bring up the golf course, where we were able to take the rights in that and get private funding, that was great. And hopefully, this new land for the farmer, you know, the rights for that, hopefully, we get a bunch of private donations. So I'm all for private donations. I don't think anything seedy or anything like that is going on. This is just people who wish to up the police presence, and they already have it. They're just actually moving a chief spot to a deputy spot, and just kind of realigning how they do things. So again, I would remind everybody that the sheriff is responsible for all police presence in this county. And this is actually increasing that, which, again, I think benefits the county, because in case of an emergency, and which is why I brought it up in the first place, that deputy can be moved. We have another deputy out on the streets. And that's something that we all wish to have under that, under the whole proposal that we did a few months back. So I am not concerned as far as where the money comes from. Basically, the town is coming up with it, you know, either through private funds or taxpayer dollars. And I would urge you to support this as a way to putting more policing on the streets in our county. Thank you.
Supervisor Newman.
Thank you. I don't want my comment to sway anybody's decision because of the private funding issue. In fact, I applaud the town for being creative to come up with this funding and keep it off of their towns' taxpayers. So I will support this. I just wanted to mention their creativity with coming up with their portion of the funding. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gallitz.
Right, so I understand, you know, the desire, or if the intent was actually adding more enforcement, but it's only shifting where the funding is coming from, right? There's a entity already within the Town of West Bend and has capacity of 40-plus hours. Well, we're just shifting that now to a deputy. And we're shifting the cost and the funding from the town to the county by 50% in the sales tax dollars. So I kind of get some of that, but we already have that, to your point, Supervisor Kelling, we already have the deputy that's providing services throughout that township. So maybe to Supervisor Krebs as well, is there an expectation that this position will provide more enforcement for the town? Because presumably, that's what the current position is doing. So to me, it's just shifting cost. So if it's important to the constituents of the Town of West Bend, and they've been paying for it to date, whether it be private, public, they should continue to do that, in my opinion.
Thank you. Supervisor Shodran.
Just to add to that, Supervisor Gallitz, my understanding, because I was at that meeting when they discussed this, is that they still are, while they're getting rid of their position, they're still funding 50% of this. So in essence, they are also funding. And as far as the shared services go, they want to utilize the sheriff as part of their shared services, rather than road service or IT. I believe they're doing some IT as well. But either way, I believe our intent, when we did the shared services, was that a certain pocket of money would go to each municipality. And I believe this is just the way they wanted to utilize that. So we're not really adding more to them. This is just the one they wanted. I don't know if you can agree with what I just said there. And I think they just wanted 40 hours per week, right? My understanding. So then beyond that, our sheriff goes wherever.
And I think one thing you might want to consider is that this is a two-year agreement, that this is funded for two years, and then either the town or the county has to make a decision after that if they want to continue it. So we always have attrition and retirement. So if the position is gone in two years, then it's gone. But, and just to address a little bit what Supervisor Gallitz, or, I mean, Krebs was asking, I forgot to mention that the Sheriff's Office handles about 3,300 calls for service in the town every year. And that's about a 22.3% increase from 2019. It's been steadily going up everywhere in the county. So the workload is certainly there to be had.
Thank you. Supervisor Conrad.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I did speak with Town of West Bend individual Mark Wager. And he did, you know, respond to me, too, that this is more of, say, the Town of West Bend essentially helping out the county's needs as a whole, and not just keeping that individual morsel, you know, just for West Bend. And like he actually said, I'm reading right here from the email, is that then this deputy would be available to the county, you know, the county as a whole, for emergency situations and overall staffing needs. So they're really trying to help out, you know, utilize, optimize this role, too, for when the county does need, you know, additional help also. It has been pointed out a couple of times, that when a sheriff has to go to the hospital with the individual, that actually pulls two sheriffs away. And, you know, sometimes we have just five out there, so we only have, you know, three really covering our county. And so, you know, this helps to get, you know, another individual out there to pull for the county's needs as a whole.
Mr. Schmidt, you have something to add?
Just a point of clarification with regard to the roadway shared services fund that Supervisor Shodran mentioned. It is true that the Town of West Bend is foregoing those funds. But those funds may be redistributed to other municipalities that are in that shared revenue. That'll be determined in roughly September, when that committee meets again of all the towns, cities, and villages. So just pointing it out there that those funds might not be shifted to this project, they might be shifted to other roadway projects. They might be shifted to other roadway projects.
Supervisor Krebs, I believe this gets us back to a possible amendment.
No amendment at this time. Looking for clarification. At the end of the twenty four, twenty five band annual budget, would this position then go away? Or how is this position continued? I'm just looking for clarification, not so much between West Bend, town of West Bend and the county, but more just on the county's perspective side as far as is this position coming back up for debate at the county board at that time? Or would this just be a position that's just lumped into the county biannual budget and probably forgotten about by that point?
I guess I'm not in a position to answer. I'm comfortable with whatever decision this body makes on that.
Because I don't know if anyone else has a better answer on that then, but I would I would ask that this comes back for back before the county board, not just forgotten about in the massive budget at that at a future date.
Mr. Dahl.
Thank you. So to answer your question, yes, the the original plan would be for it to come back as part of the budget unless you would like a specific report or something at at some point. But yes, the intent would be for it to be considered with the full budget. And then at that time, we would determine whether the agreement we proceed with the agreement or or not.
When I get I count my years wrong. When are we when's the next time we're actually going through a budget like workshop in relation to like when this position? I suppose as long as we're funding it now, this would just get out and cycle with the budget.
Correct. And that would be next summer.
If this does go through, I'd like it to have more than twelve months of us to see exactly what this position has has done for the township at that point. I I would ask that at the end of this resolution that this has a two year. Thinking on the fly with a hot mic, I would I would ask I would make a motion that at the end of this resolution that this position has a two year term to it. And that it would come back before this board at the end of two years from the from whenever the creation of this officially starts that we review it at that time and reassess.
If you look at the page, the second page, I think, line twenty five, it does kind of have a sunset. So would you like to change that from June twenty twenty five on line seven on the second
Okay, I apologize. I did not see that there. So no, that that would be fine with me if it comes back to committee at that time.
Okay. Any further discussion? And we'll vote electronically. This also requires a two thirds vote. Who are we missing?
You check.
Yeah. Oh, me. But I voted. There we go. It passes seventeen to two with Supervisor Krebs and Supervisor Galletts voting negatively. Our next item is Resolution eighty two, which is a revised relocation order for County Trunk Highway M, which was discussed briefly before this meeting. Supervisor Schwab, Supervisor Newman. We'll vote electronically. This requires only a simple majority. It passes unanimously. And our final resolution is ordinance fifteen to amend sections fifteen twenty eight and fifteen thirty one relating to executive committee. This means IT is now under public works instead of executive. So any discussion? Oh, motion by Supervisor Schwab, second by Supervisor Shadron. Discussion? This is also simple majority. It passes unanimously. Our next meeting will be immediately after this meeting. We adjourn C N A D. Meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. This meeting was posted by the clerk's office appropriately. We'll rise for a moment of silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The county clerk will take the roll call.
Supervisor Bailey. Supervisor Bossert. Supervisor Berg. Supervisor Galletts. Supervisor Gurath. Supervisor Hartwig. Supervisor Kelling. Supervisor Krebs. Supervisor Krieger Gundrum. Supervisor Mary. Supervisor Chairperson Schleif. Supervisor McCullic. Supervisor Newman. And Supervisor Pridemore is not here. She is sick. Supervisor Shadron. Supervisor Schulteis. And Supervisor Toma is also not present. Oh, I know. Yes, sorry. Oh, yeah, Toma's farther down. Sorry. I wanted to make sure I didn't miss him. Supervisor Schwab. Supervisor Troutner. Supervisor Vespolak. And Supervisor Watson Conrath.
Then you administer the oath to all of us? The next issue is the oath of office.
So if you all wanted to stand up, I'll have you raise your right hands, and I will state the oath, and then you can just repeat after me, and I'll do it in small sections. But just make sure you're raising your right hand. Aye, and then state your name.
Aye, Chairman McCullic.
Having been elected to the Office of County Board Supervisor.
Having been elected to the Office of County Board Supervisor.
And then state your district number.
District number ten.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
You guys can all sign.
Oh, yes.
Oh, don't you have to witness us, I mean?
Yes.
You can all sign, and the mic will be picking them up. And then I will sign them after, and we'll be providing you each with a copy of yours.
You can leave it in. It's fine. Leave it in the the paper thing.
Although I'm I'm told this is ceremonial, but we have adoption of the rules, which are in the code. So I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Shadron. Supervisor Kelling. Any discussion? Can we do that voice vote?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is election of chairperson. I'll open for nominations. Supervisor Gurath. Wait a minute, doesn't turn on.
I would like to nominate Chris Bossert for chairman of the board. He will be respectful of everyone on the board, even when they do not agree. I believe a strong board is one with diverse opinions and ideas. We should not be expected to be bobbleheads agreeing with the chairman on every issue. Chris will not only be open to hearing dissenting opinions, he will welcome them in order to look at all sides of an issue and come to the best decision. So therefore, I nominate Chris Bossert.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Supervisor Mary.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Chair. I'm glad to see so many bright, shining, and smiling faces here this morning. If you haven't gotten donuts yet, go ahead and do that. For those of you who are continuing in this journey, congratulations on winning your seats in the election. For those of you who are new to this group, congratulations to you as well as and welcome aboard. You will find the next two years filled with opportunities to truly serve your fellow citizens. There will be good times when we can all eagerly agree to agree for the sake of the county. There will be times of some heated but always polite discussion and expressions of differences of opinion. We all serve at the pleasure of a unique group of citizens who are who are not alike. I represent a segment of Germantown, and most people there don't even know what Samaritan is, not like West Bend, where it's a hallowed institution. We also have rural areas represented who don't realize any benefit of contributing hundreds of thousands of dollars or even millions of their tax dollars to improve the drinking water situation in West Bend. And West Bend residents who don't understand why we should commit hundreds of thousands of dollars to helping preserve farm and other open land areas in the county. I say this because all of us have different constituents and why we must always focus on what is the overall best decision for the entire county. As county board supervisors, you have to represent those who elected us and expect us to express their opinions. We are a unique group of cats, and it will be very difficult to keep us herded into some kind of general direction. And for that, we look at our committee chairs, who make up the executive committee, and for our overall leader, our county board chair. For the past two years, we've been fortunate to have that kind of leadership in Jeff Schleif. Of all the attributes Jeff brings to this group as its chair, perhaps the most important is his background. You see, Jeff is a farm boy from Kewasken area, and that brings it with it some grounded common sense. It comes up with growing up on a farm and having chores to do at a young age and work responsibilities far beyond those of his most of his age group. But more importantly, Jeff is an engineer by training and profession, and he sees things a little differently than most of us. He looks at things through a different lens and imagines from the outset how peg A can go into hole A. For a logical standpoint, he can quickly visualize somehow some things will work and others won't. Not only can this ability save time, but it can also help us keep us from going down the wrong path, especially financially. He has a very logical mind. It is not to say he doesn't understand how a subject can become emotional and how this can sway the decision making process, but has been successful at keeping his herd of cats headed in the proper direction. I nominate Jeff Schleif for a second term as chair of the Washington County Board of Supervisors for two specific reasons. First, he has a business, budget, and logical acumen to be in the best be the best we have to offer. And Lord knows, he certainly dedicates a tremendous amount of time to the job. And he provides stability and continuity to the operations of the board and the oversight of the executive committee to keep all those cats in line and purring along successfully as supervisors.
Any other nominations or discussion? Okay, we'll circulate the ballots. Supervisor Conrath.
I would like to nominate myself for Health and Human Services Committee.
Um, that's our first chair.
Oh, sorry. Can I?
So only fill out the red.
Oh, sorry. Supervisor Bossert, do you accept the nomination? I also accept my nomination.
Can we just get clarification on since there's two opens two supervisors missing today, how the majority works for for winning?
The the winner will be the supervisor who receives the most votes cast today.
Yes, just chair, sorry. I think that was just if we had one of them. Those are probably from the sixties.
Cigar box?
We've had that forever.
Vintage cigar box.
Probably Anton Starro.
That's back when you could.
Old courthouse, you could smoke. They all had ashtrays. You could see them on the picture.
That cigar box is from when you could still go to go to Cuba and buy cigars.
You smoked in this board.
Probably, yeah.
There used to be opening windows, and that was the reason. So the smoke would go out. I T director's office used to have a smoke heater, like a machine on the ceiling. Maybe it was that long ago.
Oh, do I have to turn your mic on? Turn your mic on? Deputy Clerk Mary will read the votes.
Christopher Bossert. Christopher Bossert. Jeff Schleif. Jeff Schleif. Chris Bossert. Jeff Schleif. Jeff Schleif. Jeff Schleif. Chris Bossert. Jeff Schleif. It's an abstention. Jeff Schleif. Jeff Schleif. Jeff Schleif. Jeff Schleif. Chris Bossert. Jeff Schleif. Jeff Schleif. Jeff Schleif. Jeff Schleif. Supervisor Bossert has five votes. Supervisor Schleif has 13 votes and there was one abstention.
Thank you. As I said two years ago, I'm humbled and honored that you've chosen me to lead. But I'm only one voice, we're all equal here, so some of Supervisor Bossert's comments are taken well to heart. Along the road here somewhere, we forgot to communicate. You know, some things have happened and nobody comes and asks me, nobody talks to me. My door is open. We're all equal and I think we need to have open and honest communication and we can all get along better. I'm remiss, I did not thank my wife because this takes a tremendous amount of time away from family time, so thank you all. Next item is election of the four standing committee chairpersons. And we draw out of a hat to determine the order.
Human Services will be the first committee.
Do we have a nomination for chair of Human Services? Supervisor Mary.
Thank you, Chair. Fellow county supervisors, it is with great pleasure that I nominate Supervisor Jody Schulteis for the position of chair of the County Human Services Committee. She has already passed around to all of you a bit of a Vida outlining her words and qualifications she has for this position, as well as some of the accomplishments of the committee and the Human Services team have realized in the past two years. I don't need to reiterate all that for you. In that, she touts 30 years of professional experiences, including a master's degree in social work and many years in senior leadership in the healthcare industry. On top of that, is her volunteer work for organizations within the county. Most importantly though, is the team that has been established with Jody and her committee members, as well as those who work in the trenches with the Human Services Group. As she has been told by some of that group, quote, "They'd look forward to the continuity she could bring with another term as the committee's chair." And this is a key issue. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. That sounds trite, but it's true. Under her leadership, the links between the county board and Human Services are very strong and things are functioning exceptionally well. Keep Jody Schulteis on as chair of the Human Services Committee. Thank you.
Supervisor Schulteis, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Supervisor Watson Conrath.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, got a little nervous earlier. I would like to nominate myself for Health and Human Services Chair. And first, I would like to thank everyone who has already served on the executive committee and its chairs and Jody too, especially with these last couple of years. A little tumultuous that the Health and Human Services Committee, but I'm seeking your vote to serve you all and our constituents really, as a Health and Human Services Committee Chair and thus be your voice and advocate also on the executive committee. Stepping up to serve as HHS Chair, I believe is my duty as a nurse. In my first term, I did serve on that committee and now I'm asking to serve as the chair. And as a nurse serving on the HHS Committee will help, I believe, ease some tensions and relationships between the Samaritan staff and individuals, residents there, which I have some strong relationships with, and the county as we go on this transitional journey. Stepping up to serve is truly only about serving. And I would like to state too, the Institutes of Medicine Report has stated that our country needs more nurses on boards, you know, due to our natural holistic and critical thinking, just diplomacy and advocacy skills. And I translate that from my nursing profession, as you all have seen, to my county board service. And this translation, you know, includes a holistic thinking and the clinical inquiry, critical inquiry. And I am respectful of diversity of thought and encourage it. And as I have stated in meetings, if everyone's thinking the same thing, no one's thinking. And high functioning teams, you know, have a culture where everyone is comfortable sharing their thoughts and this generates innovation and, too, and that holistic thinking that I keep speaking of. And as you all have witnessed, I am an advocate, listen first, try and avoid prejudging, and diplomatic. And I appreciate Jody's too professional experience. I'd like to share with you mine. It includes on drafting and lobbying for nursing legislation over a 10-year journey, on the president of nursing organizations, including the greater Milwaukee area at the state level for the Wisconsin Association of Clinical Nurse Specialists. And currently too, I do serve at the national level for the National Association of Clinical Nurse Specialists on their legislation and regulation committee. And my nursing professional experience includes creating system teams from the ground up and some of my accountabilities too, and currently, our policy, regulation, quality and safety. And I've earned and hold a national certification in quality and safety and currently am working towards my doctor in nursing practice for executive leadership at Edgewood College. And I believe too, if you're able to represent the board as a whole and your constituents as are all states, then you two are qualified to step up. And several of you, you know, have not yet served and maybe haven't, you know, written, handed out a piece of paper or something. And I encourage you, you know, to take this moment and step up too. We truly need our best individuals to step forward for the betterment of the county as a whole. And, you know, to close stepping up to serve as a HHS Chair and on the executive committee, it's not about me, or I won't be doing this, is about to optimize my skills for the county as a whole and our constituents. And again, I believe it is my duty as a nurse and I'm seeking your vote to advocate and be your voice at the table. Thank you.
Seeing you nominated yourself, I imagine you accept the nomination. Supervisor Krieger Gundrum.
I'm asking for all of you to join me in support of Pam Conrath for Chair of Human Services. Her extensive experience in medical administration and background as a nurse make her most qualified to serve as Chair for Human Services Committee. I think that we should seek to elect supervisors who bring various points of view to our executive committee. Supervisor Conrath will bring the viewpoint as Chair of the Farmland Preservation Plan Advisory Committee. She represents one of the most diverse districts in the county. District 14 stretches from West Bend city limit subdivisions, which is in the town of West Bend. It also includes Cedar Lake residents and she regularly attends the meetings of the town of Polk and the village of Richfield when needed. In the past, she has brought thoughtful points and discussions forward when she served on Human Services and Public Safety Committees, as well as at the county board meetings. As we've all seen on county board interactions, Pam respects the opinions of others and considers their point of view when making decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further nominations or discussion? Okay, we'll vote on the ballots.
Jody Schulteis. Jody Schulteis. Jody Schulteis. Pam Conrath. Jody Schulteis. Jody Schulteis. Jody Schulteis. Pam Watson Conrath. Pam Watson Conrath. Pam Conrath. Pam Conrath. Jody Schulteis. Jody Schulteis. Pam Conrath. Jody Schulteis. Jody Schulteis. Pam Conrath. Jody Schulteis. I have a blank ballot and Pam Watson Conrath. Supervisor Schulteis has 11 votes and Supervisor Watson Conrath has eight votes.
Congratulations. Our next committee chair will be... You gotta draw.
Yes. The next committee chairperson will be for Public Safety, which is her tan ballots.
Supervisor Schulteis.
I would like to nominate Mike Schwab for Public Safety. Mike has exemplified himself as a servant leader. He has also distributed document outlining some of his experiences, volunteership at church in Jackson and at MPTC. I'll just highlight a few of them. He views himself as a servant leader as well because of the nature in which he behaves. And he's been called upon in the past to serve in leadership roles in church, the municipal and educational organizations. And he's been Chair of the Board of Stewardship at Church, the Board of Elders, and the Village of Jackson. He served on the Public Works Committee as a member, then as a trustee in Jackson, and most recently as a village president. He's also served in the past at Marine Park Technical College, the district board president, and currently serving as the board secretary. And additionally, of course, as a Washington County Board Supervisor. These positions have not come about because he is inserting himself into the positions. These positions came about because in each of these organizations, they recognized his reasoned, fair, and objective stance on issues. He's lived in Washington County for about 26 years, since 1998, and has three sons and a wife of 35 years. He's worked for the same employer, Circuit Electric, for all but five months of his time in Washington County. Mike is not interested in being a politician, rather he's interested in doing all that he can to preserve America's freedom and for generations to come. It would be my honor to cast my vote for Mike Schwab for Chair of Public Safety.
Supervisor Schwab, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Thank you. Any further nominations? Supervisor Bossert.
So I've had the privilege of being the Chair for Public Safety for the last four years. Earlier today, I ran for county board chairman. Had I won, one of my hopes was that we could find a way to bring Supervisor Schwab to the executive committee. I believe he belongs on the executive committee. I'm happy he's running for this position and so I'm deciding not to run and to yield it to Supervisor Schwab. Thank you.
Any further nominations? In that case, we dispense with the election and Supervisor Schwab is declared elected. Congratulations. Oh, again.
The next committee that you will be voting for the chairperson of is the Land Use and Planning Committee, your pink ballots.
I would like to nominate Supervisor Kelling. He has been a leader for this board for the eight years we've served together. And he's never been a committee chair. He's been vice chair back when the vice chair didn't have to be a committee chair. So he's a leader, we all know that. So, and I believe that he should represent this board and also the city of West Bend on the executive committee. Thank you. Any other nominations? There being none, we'll declare him elected. Did you have a comment Supervisor Gallitz?
Thank you. I'd like to nominate myself for the Land Use and Planning Committee. I've been on the committee for four to six years and I believe continuity and consistency is of value. I've had the luxury of serving as vice chair for at least two of those terms under both Supervisor Schleif and Supervisor Mary. I've learned a lot from them and with my past experience in elected positions, running a meeting well suited for, and I believe balanced contribution, not only to the land use and planning, but also to the executive committee, would be of utmost purpose in my role. So I would appreciate your support for Chair of Land Use and Planning.
And again, since you nominated yourself, I assume you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further nominations? There being none, we'll vote on the pink ballots. There being none, we'll vote on the pink ballots.
Dennis Kelling. Dennis Kelling. Dennis Kelling. Brian Gallitz. Dennis Kelling. Dennis Kelling. Brian Gallitz. Brian Gallitz. Brian Gallitz. Dennis Kelling. Dennis Kelling. Dennis Kelling. Supervisor Gallitz. Dennis Kelling. Dennis Kelling. Dennis Kelling. Dennis Kelling. Brian Gallitz. Kelling. Supervisor Kelling has 13 votes, and Supervisor Gallitz has 6 votes.
Congratulations. I believe that only leaves Public Works, correct? Nominations are open for Public Works. Supervisor Schwab. Let me turn your mic on.
I would nominate District 8 Supervisor John Shadron to the position of Public Works. John has served in that position for a number of years. He works in the industry of construction. He understands much of which goes on, much of what goes on with Public Works, and has a keen understanding of costs in the area of construction. I believe he is a benefit to the committee, works well with the county employees in that regard, and will serve the county well, will continue to serve the county well, as Public Works Committee Chairman. Thank you.
Supervisor Shadron, do you accept the nomination?
I do. I do, thank you, and I appreciate everybody's support for the last two years. So, thank you.
Any other nominations or discussion? There being none, we will declare him elected unanimously. Congratulations. Next up is the election of First Vice Chairperson. Nominations, please. Supervisor Kelling.
I would seek your support for nomination, or to be nominated and to be served as your next First Vice Chairman. I realize this is an opportunity. I see our board has been a little bit more contentious this last period, and it is my hope and thought to try and bring unity to the board and really work together. Chairman Schleif and I, I believe there's a great opportunity for us to do a little bit better in communication. I think his nomination of me shows that he's absolutely willing to move that direction. So I ask for your support. Thank you.
Does he have to accept the nomination? Yeah, it's on. Okay. Supervisor Mary.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to nominate Mike Schwab as First Vice Chair. I don't know how many of you gotten to know Mike over the last two years, but he's a gentleman who offers true leadership, and I think he has the demeanor to lead this board in a very positive way. Thank you, sir.
In our discussions... Yes? Do you accept?
I do.
In our discussions over the last several months, there's been a lot of talk about changing out some of the Executive Committee and mixing it up, like some of you said. So these are two excellent choices, and I think they both represent the future of this board. So I support Supervisor Kelling, but I also support Supervisor Schwab. We'll vote on the ballots. This is the yellow.
The second amount of votes is automatically Second Vice Chair, then?
No.
It's a vote.
Mike Schwab. Mike Schwab. Mike Schwab. Dennis Kelling. Mike Schwab. Mike Schwab. Mike Schwab. Mike Schwab. Dennis Kelling. Dennis Kelling. Supervisor Mike Schwab. Dennis Kelling. Schwab. Mike Schwab. Kelling. Mike Schwab. Mike Schwab. Mike Schwab. Mike. Supervisor Kelling has 5 votes, and Supervisor Schwab has 14.
Congratulations, Supervisor Schwab. Next up, oh, Supervisor Schwab.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, board members. I appreciate the confidence that you've placed in me. It is indeed an honor to serve the constituents of Washington County, but also this board in this capacity. So I appreciate your trust and your confidence. Thank you very much.
Next we'll vote for Second Vice Chair. For Second Vice Chair, nominations are open. Supervisor Shadron.
I nominate Dennis Kelling.
Yeah, I can't get it to turn on. There.
Ah, there we go. I nominate Dennis Kelling for Second Vice Chair. Thank you.
Supervisor Kelling, do you accept?
I accept.
I nominate Supervisor Schulteis, if she'll accept.
I am not going to accept at this time. I appreciate the offer and nomination, but I am prepared to comply with my public services and lots to accomplish yet, so, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? There being none, we'll declare Supervisor Kelling unanimously elected. Our next order of business is Resolution 1, the commendation of Jeffrey Milliken. I believe he stepped out a moment, but he'll be back. While we're waiting, remind you that we have a short orientation after this, so I want, wish you would all stay around. I think it'll only be 45 minutes or an hour, so...
No, we're going to resume. So, yep, if you would like to, just let it, I'll mark you down, and if you have a list on it, and you want to... Yeah, yep. Yeah, yep, we'll let you know. We'll actually be letting everybody know in case they want to read it.
The clerk will read Resolution 1.
Commendation of Jeffrey Milliken. Whereas an honored and respected of the member of the Washington County Board has chosen to bring an end to his distinguished service on the board, and whereas by his straightforward manner and devotion to duty, he won the friendship and esteem of his colleagues, and whereas Jeffrey Milliken has always given freely of his time and talents and his efforts provided visible and tangible improvements to his community and the citizens of Washington County, and whereas it is the distinct desire of the county board to pay tribute to Jeffrey Milliken for his four years of service to the constituents of District 12, now therefore be it resolved that the Washington County Board of Supervisors pause in its deliberations to pay tribute and to commend Jeffrey Milliken for his past years of service to this board. Be it further resolved that the resolution be made a part of the recorded proceedings of this board. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Jeffrey Milliken as a token of appreciation on the part of this board.
Thank you for your service, sir. Would you like to speak?
Held this position. It's been four years since I've held this position, and it's been a pleasure working with all, and I think we've accomplished a lot. Thank you.
If you would, Jeff, stick around for a picture. Our next meeting date is Wednesday, May 8th. This meeting's adjourned.